Okay. I'd like to call order the town council meeting for July 25th. Those that are from our community that just signed in, or we just let in, please. We are having a bit of technical difficulties tonight. We are both on phones and on Zoom and recording in different ways. So we will do our best to hear everybody and listen as best as we can. So patience would be appreciated for everything. As we start all the time, we'll start with the pledge allegiance to our country. I could not make this. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, one nation, all our borders, one indivisible, and every kingdom, this is for all. Okay. I always start our meetings about how we conduct ourselves. We will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect because we're all neighbors. And I want to point out one thing about we are all neighbors. So Jim, who's been, I think this is your third or fourth council meeting here advocating for a change for noise ordinance because you and your neighbor had an issue. Well, Jim got together with his neighbor. They sat down, they wrote, they put things in writing, and both parties appear to be happy. So Jim, kudos to you, kudos to your neighbor. I would like the government to get involved when the neighbors can be friendly and figure it out.
Thank you very also.
It helped coordinate again, and he was our resource officer. He's a friend of yours, or a show work fellow, and he was helping us out. So much appreciate it. Announcements, we had an executive session on July 18th that discussed personnel matters, but no action was taken. We have some upcoming events. Community Day is September 10th. That is from 4:00 to 8:00. All the details are on our website. Ride to the kids, food, entertainment. So make sure you can fireworks. Make sure we write that. Make sure you note that. And then National Night Out is August 2nd. That is from 5:00 to 8:00 here at Town Hall. Again, food activities, having bike rodeo responders. I think it'll be a great, great event. Okay, now we'll have public comment on anything on the agenda. We'll start with those here with us tonight. And then we'll go to Zoom if that's working. If anyone here that needs, wants to make comments on agenda items.
I have a question. What is number 10 about?
Come on up and tell us your name and your address.
Ellsworth 9635 Old Kuma Road, Allison Park, PA 1501. What is the district saying about voting or is it possible?
Every 10 years, we have council look at our community to see where it's grown or where it's shifted. So we have the opportunity to re-alot the wards, the amount of people in each ward. So we put together that I care with the care of the Republican Committee, which we met. And we came up with a few tweaks to the districts. And if it's coming later, we'll give an update on.
I don't have any comment about that. I wasn't clear.
Yep.
Come on up. Tell us your name, address, and then comments on the agenda items.
Yeah. James, one sign up, 120 Ridge Avenue, New York. I'm speaking on the noise ordinance. I'd like still the council to look into, I presented the first meeting, went through the Hampton Township council. They pushed through a few years ago. But in regards to that, how it says additional conditions states in here, our code states after pipes are in working order on an off-road or train vehicle or cause unnecessary noise to a resident like myself or a guest. That's ours. It's very mildly worded. Whereas Hampton's stated to continue any loud, unnecessary or unusual noise or noises which either are noise, disturbs, injures, or threatens the comfort, the repose, the health, the peace, or safety of others within township limits. And there's also like a distance level in Hampton Township. And if you still have that copy, I should, you can look that. You should even make a bar. And it's not like you're in the North Ford where you're riding a trail bike and all. When you're a train vehicle, you're in a residential neighborhood and this stuff is going on. Forty feet from property line, 250 feet or 40 feet from residence and 250 feet wherever Hampton's reading a certain area on a person's property, that's still, that's still pretty close, but it's better than nothing. But we need to look at the wording so it's easier for the code enforcement officer and the police, if it's ever necessary, like with these all-terrain vehicles, and I'm sure there's other things people got to use it or something. But mine deals with the railways and also the smell from the fumes when my door was open at times and the windows last fall coming to my house. They also have stuff in there and their orders by county vehicles. And I can just, you can't hear it. I don't know if my, this is.
Yeah, they're really, yeah, we all like that stuff, Jim.
But yeah, I got numerous videos there where you could hear it when it was really going on. Like I said, July 2nd, it did go on from like 12:30 to like around 4:07. I came to an agreement with the neighbor. It's been pretty good. Limiting and we're going to work with the smells of it. But just in case it doesn't, or other residents, this, this needs to be looked at because the police officers, they can't enforce it the way it's worked. There's not enough to back up, you know, when a citizen needs the, like the proposal, peace, health, tranquility. As a property owner, like I said, any officer, anyone sitting here in this council, if it was going on behind your house, right behind your door, and trust me, you ever hear a bike revving RPMs up? It's terrible. I don't care how big or small, whether the pipes are in working condition or not. When it's right behind your back door, it's terrible. So yeah, sure. So I just want to thank you for considering this and I hope it works through and keep me in. Those here helps me, I hope it's all myself, but it helps other people in township. That'd be great too. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other couple of comments from those in the. If anyone online would like to make a public comment, type your name in the chat, your address, we can send you a mic. Sandra, we.
No.
Moving on, the town meeting minutes, those are shared with us in our packet. Does anyone on council have any changes they would like to see?
Mr. President? I'd like to compliment the, whoever's composing the minutes right now. I find them to, the format to be much cleaner and concise and less rambling. So thank you for whoever is changed the format of the minutes. I think it's a big improvement.
Sandra, thank you. Does anybody have any changes?
None. I'll make a motion to approve the town council minutes of July 2022.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Casey, everyone is, okay. Everyone in favor of adopting the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Casey, would you like to run us through the committee reports for administration?
Hopefully anybody got an opportunity to review the checklist in number six. Does anybody have any questions?
I do need to make one comment. The checklist that was posted initially was missing the health insurance payment for June. So I have added it and the new total is correct on the agenda. It was an EFT and that's why there's no gap in the seat. But the new amount should be the $1,087,935.
Changes, anything on the date for the checklist?
Would like to make a motion to list number six dated June 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2022, totaling $1,087,935,75 as submitted to each member of council and posted on the board and board and town website.
Do we have a second? Second? Singer? Everyone in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Now I'd like to turn it over to this great house to continue.
We are going to look at the financial report for the month of June. And so as you saw in the dashboard, the general fund results, we are at 45% of budget compared to 35% for 2021's revenue compared to 2021 in the revenue category. Then on expenditures for 2022 are 36% versus 39% for 21. Those items, so we are performing ahead of budget. If anyone has any questions on the dashboard, I'm happy to answer them. There'll be more on that conversation as we enter into the budget updates. Does anyone have any questions about June's results? As I mentioned, consistently performing over budget for revenues, consistently performing less than last year in expenses. The communication report, John has prepared that and unfortunately he has a power outage in Petna. So he was unable to log in tonight. The, yeah, I know, it's the weather, I guess. And so the communication report is in your packets. He has made updates to it this month regarding Facebook and shades and graphs related to those items. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us and we're happy to answer.
So that's included in the packet that the community received, should know, the communication report.
Yes.
It is, okay.
As part of tonight's agenda, we talked about last meeting, doing a 2022 budget update. The town administrative code requires that any item that is expected to go over $5,000 or 10% should be reported at the council at that time. Given that it's halfway through the year and we have a number of items that we have suffered through inflation with over the last six months, I thought this was an opportunity for us to go through the different departments and revenue items and just do a brief analysis real quick. We do have a public hearing on an ordinance amendment that will happen on the 8th. And then the vote on the ordinance will occur on the 22nd. So tonight I'm looking for more or less just head nods on a couple of items. I'll, and I'll point those out as we go through. So what we're going to talk about are revenues that are performing over expected budget, expenditures that are missing their targets, and then the timing of capital improvement projects. Revenues as part of the monthly revenue report, we've been talking about how real estate transfer tax is performing ahead of budget due to some commercial sales that we had in February. And it's been a steadily healthy real estate market. Conservatively, I estimate that we will outperform budget by approximately $185,000. This additional revenue can be used to fund increases in fuel, vehicle parts, machinery costs, in addition to other expenditures that have been affected by inflation. The recycling grant from 2021 that was distributed in 2022 outperformed budget by about $20,000. I don't anticipate using this right off the bat. We may hold this until the November amendment that is traditional. I'm going to wait and see the grass recycling, if that cost exceeds what I have budgeted at $4,000. We mentioned the fire grant award at the last meeting. Jeff Whitmer received the unanticipated grant award that will cover additional expenditures associated with that grant scope. It was things for public safety in regards to fire safety. A couple of housekeeping items that we have. The Treasury issued additional guidance in the first quarter of 2022. So the American Rescue Plan Act money that we anticipated receiving and had budgeted allocations from that fund into the general fund, CIP fund. Treasury is now recommending that all that money go through the general fund. Since we received less than 10 million, we can defer that for revenue law through operating expenditures in the general fund and then transfer to capital improvements. Project fund is a normal CIP transfer that we're used to seeing in our budget on an annual basis. This will result in amendments to the inter-fund transfer account. So this is definitely a housekeeping item that will be in the budget amendment. Just so that I can get those pathways clear and consistent with how we're reporting for the grant. The street water and sewer assessment fund is not one that you all have typically seen in the budget amendment. This is one that has historically been used to fund the demos, like the Montclair and Xavier demos occurring this summer. This fund will transfer revenues into the general fund to pay for the cost of those demos until the properties are sold and the municipal units can be collected. So that's another housekeeping item. The expenditures in the general fund that we're seeing savings in so far this year, the new phone system is coming in $15,000 to $19,000 under budget. We're installing that this month. We're waiting to receive the bill. The ambulance authority consultants, they are coming in about $20,000 under budget. We had budgeted them at $35,000. And when we shared the cost with Marshall and Pine, I believe we'll have cost savings in 412. Salt and other chemicals in 432, which is snow and ice control. Jeff has assured me that we're probably going to end up being about $60,000 under budget. That's a conservative estimate. Again, I may revisit this slide item in November, depending on how the October 31st snowfall goes. These items can be reallocated to other departments through the course of the budget amendment if necessary. But our budget is required if we move from public safety to a public works code, it has to go through an amendment process. Things that we're seeing overruns in, no one's surprised by the fuel overrun. Public safety, so we have 410, which is police, 411, which is fire, and 412, which is ambulance, are all overrunning in fuel, both unleaded and in the case of the, I'm sorry, in case of the fire and diesel. So there's about a $42,000, I'm anticipating $42,000 overage. That will be offset by collections from MSPAA and the fire companies. But again, it's a housekeeping item that I showed the increases on both sides. The purchase of the fire, high-end fire truck that happened in February, that is a new expense. We did not anticipate that until 2023. But in order to receive the savings, we had to do that in 22. It's really just a housekeeping item because it'll be funded by the fire apparatus reserve transfer. And that fund is very helpful. As I previously mentioned, the demolitions of the, say, structures at Xavier and Montclair came in well under what we expected them to, but it is a $20,000 offset that I'll have to account for with the transfer from the assessment. And that'll go against 413, which is building safety. Public Works, diesel, I am anticipating about a $22,000 overrun. And then vehicle parts and repairs under 437, I'm expecting about a $10,000 and a $12,000 overrun respectively. And these all that are not covered by a revenue source already, I believe can be easily covered by the overage in real estate transfer. There are a few projects that we have not started in the general fund if council so desires. We have the $25,000 in strategic planning. We have the $25,000 in the website development. We anticipate releasing that RFP in August. And so if that's something you want me to postpone, we'll need to know that as soon as possible. Multiple, multiple departments have software purchase and implementation costs included in them. Again, RJ and I anticipate bringing that contract to you on the 22nd of August. She and I are working out the final quotes with those two software companies. And then in 454, we initially had anticipated hiring two summer park maintenance positions. Unfortunately, both candidates pulled it out and did not work this summer. So we have about $16,000 that I'd like to transfer to maintenance and repair services for the parks, between the plumbing, the concession stands, and the other landscaping materials that we need here at the town. I would like to make that transfer within 454 for parks. Anyone have any questions on the general? I go too fast?
So we're about 300, 300K good on the revenue side and about 80 or 90K to the expense side. So we're ahead where this is just.
This is just housekeeping.
Things around.
Yes.
Yeah, and there was nothing more bought. It was like, so, so Jeff, change it like, so it was, we, parts went over. We didn't buy different parts. It was, we were planning on buying XYZ parts and they just went up in cost like you're seeing here.
Unplaced, 20%.
The only thing, yeah, the only thing is that was new was the fire truck and the demo, but that were not.
We have those monies in a separate.
We have those in separate accounts, yes.
Anybody have any questions?
For general.
Anyone on the line? Or I mean, the council on?
The other items I wanted to talk through are capital improvement projects. We need to give some direction to Gateway on a couple of items here. Deadwood Park basketball and tennis court retrofit, we've discussed that that's going over budget. It can be supplemented by a general fund transfer, as I mentioned, that ARPA fund money that's coming through the general fund. The Walpark field improvements, we anticipate rejecting that bid on tonight's agenda. Can also be used to compensate for that overage at Deadwood Park. The large equipment dump trucks, this unfortunately is just a housekeeping item due to a delay in receiving the 2021 trucks. They fell into 2022 expenditures. And we have, they were approved purchases, the 2022 truck has been ordered. It may also be late and may fall into 2023. But this is a housekeeping item that I'll put it in there just in case so that we upgraded it in that correct year.
What's the dollar?
The dollar amount on that is about $156,000. So the design of the bridge and culvert work, so through gateways work with laser number one and then four minor structures that also need attention, which is minor, laser two, laser three, and old Perry Highway. There is a potential for that project to go over budget by about $55,000. That money can be made up with the reduction in the 2022 budget that council approved as part of removing the chemo and put it into the bridge funds, I think, as we discussed. So again, it can be strictly a general fund transfer. The vessel part light replacement, that was an unexpected occurrence. We do have some insurance proceeds. The cost of the light was roughly 40 grands and we received about 27 from the insurance company. So the additional $13,000 can be supplemented by general fund transfer. The traffic signal upgrades, there was a need for ADA add-on at what, so flats around 19, that's about 22,000. The projects that are potentially over budget. Grubbs Road sidewalks, the grant was originally written to install and purchase the pedestrian bridge, which was about $278,000. Gateway has made a proposal that we include the additional sidewalk connections as part of the bid prep. They need some direction here. They're anticipating that that additional cost for the sidewalks that in phase one were completed by public works could be completed by the contractor who's done the bridge for roughly $50,000 to $60,000. Perry Highway sidewalks, if the full project scope is pursued, it would be about an additional $70,000 over the grant, which is 406,000. If, but Gateway has found a design that if you don't wish to go over the full scope, it can be pursued for a portion of that initial sidewalk destination. So those two items, after we go through the rest of it tonight, we will need some direction on for Gateway to move forward. Projects still to be completed in 2022, we are waiting on a bid for the windows here at Town Hall. And we are in the process of doing some boiler improvements. The windows are coming into the, are budgeted at 2.5. The boiler is about 50,000. And then there are a number of stormwater management, flood control initiatives that I'll show you here in just a second that were budgeted, but because of some conversations on the public-private projects that was anticipated to be used for this MS4 permit cycle, it's been delayed. We're going to need to look and see how to realign some of those. And let me show you those real quick. So here is the CIP that we were just talking about. I know, and so here's, we go a little. Here is the projects that we just discussed. We need to confirm if we want to do the full scope of the Highway 19 sidewalks, which would require about additional $70,000. We need to confirm that we want a contractor to install the sidewalks for Grubbs Road, which is roughly $60,000. Then, like I said, we have the money budgeted for the windows and the boiler. Hopefully the windows come in within budget as expected. We talked about the $156,000 initial on the trucks that were from 21. And then tonight we have the mower to be approved and it, with inflation, did go up slightly. We purchased one less pre-treater to try to save money for some of these smaller bridges in the meantime, in large equipment purchases. This is the 22640 for the ADA add-ons. Then, when you come down further, this is the additional structures for the smaller bridges that needed their culverts, which is, that need to be addressed. Road program is expected to come in under budget because of some utility work that was pushed off some of the roads. These are the items that are the PRPs for the MS4 permit. So initially we had planned on doing Lowers Run Walpark. We may need to look at Burries Run or Run and Run in order to satisfy the other two smaller watersheds that Gateway is addressing with the new permanent amendment.
Pollution reduction plan. So what we found, this came out of stormwater, we had, we had 12 minutes, is we have varying projects that were continued in certain watersheds that we were able to gain credit for that when this CIP was put through, four years ago, some of these projects aren't relevant now because we've already obtained credit in those areas. In other words, we haven't. So there's basically redistribution of making sure projects in the watersheds that we need credit for, for the PRP plan. So lottery fund, we were able to use two existing projects, the Highland Park Valley, the Troy Court Basin retrofit that served our needs, was already past budgets. And the additional work needed right now isn't necessary. We will look at those projects for the next cycle, but we have other ones that need to be done in this cycle. So there was a movement basically of finding projects that fit to satisfy both our budgetary constraint and PRP concerns.
So we'll need some direction. Are we going to wait for Gateway's report before we make that adjustment?
I think we want to confirm that first.
Okay.
Just to make sure they're on board, we are in the correct numbers to those projects. They're analyzing our PRP to make sure we did our best best.
So right now I would recommend leaving $200,000 in and then redesign it based on their report. So right now, I would recommend leaving two hundred thousand in and then re-design it based on their report. Um, so that'll add two hundred thousand to that, what bottom number that I'm about to get to. Um, the vessel field lights, as we talked about. Are an addition, but there's also a revenue source for most of it. Then, I'm showing a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar flip flop between Walpark and the Deadwood Court Tennis Court. Because Walpark had the bid written, as well as other work done on it this year, it does have costs. It will need to be re-prepared in December so that it can be bid again in January. So I left a little bit of money on the table for that and just didn't even out for the tennis courts at a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to cover that additional. Bid overage, so when you go down to the bottom of, of the page, you can see overall, it's about a seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven thousand dollar. Adjustment for the general, or, I'm sorry, for the CIP budget, and then if you add the additional two hundred to stormwater, I think that can make this work for two seventy. When we passed it in twenty, when we passed it in December of twenty twenty-one, it was four million, two oh three, seven sixty. We've spent five hundred thousand to date. I anticipate with commitments that we have another eight seventy-five already on the books. And then I'd like additional adjustments of two seventy, two eighty, to bring it up to roughly four point three million.
So you need.
About a hundred thousand dollars.
Are, uh, uh, two eighty or huh?
Well, and yes, it's gonna increase it by a hundred thousand dollars. But if we go to the two eighty, there'll be different funding sources, so I need some head nods though on that, whether you want.
She's moving two eighty between different councils in the CIP in the budget. She's talking about the Walpark and the tennis court tier, in order to properly pull from one and put to the other, has to jump to two eighty, but the general bottom line is a hundred thousand increase total.
Okay, hundred thousand, okay, so you need head nods from us, like, we're okay spending a hundred thousand dollars more, budgeting a hundred thousand dollars more on capital improvements, or we're not and we want to cut.
That, the two, I, I need the head nod on the two eighty, so that's the question, is for the two eighty, you're okay with me leaving the two hundred thousand in, plus the additional? For the multi-modal grants, which is the sidewalks, and then I'll have some savings in other areas for it, with, if we won't do the rain garden at Council Park. Yes. We can go down through them individually so that we make sure we get the information.
I like things simple to summarize, so, so.
Bottom line, show them the bottom line.
The bottom line, so yeah, we budgeted four two, you need a head, a head nod to increase that budget about a hundred thousand.
I need to head nod to do the hundred thousand plus the two hundred thousand for the stormwater project, because we're waiting on Gateway to tell us. What to do for this year, if we can get it done, the question is, is whether or not we're gonna be able to get it done, so to be safe, I'm gonna tell you. Because of the two for stormwater. Because I have this, I have the Ryan and Run, the Lowers Run, as a negative two hundred thousand. I want to leave that in because we're waiting on Gateway to tell us which of those projects to do, so that bottom line becomes two seventy-six, nine ten instead of the seventy, roughly the hundred grand that I was talking about.
But just. We're still.
Go ahead, Kathy.
We're still looking at a hundred thousand dollars, not three hundred thousand.
The amount coming out of general funds, how much?
The amount coming out of general fund is going to be outward of the. A hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then the ARPA money will be funding that gateway.
Yes, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify, that what we're actually pulling from the general fund was a hundred thousand, it's a hundred thousand dollars. So I guess that you need some consensus on, on our four million dollar capital improvement budget. We need to tweak the hundred thousand dollars upwards because of inflation and things we didn't know about.
Things that we want to be bid, so for instance, the sidewalk, the sidewalks, to keep them in the full project mode. The rest of it, I think we can get through the ARPA funds and force through in and out of the other.
Where would that under balance?
We had a two million dollar over, uh, a profit, but overage in twenty twenty-one, so fund balance is extremely healthy. And so it's very acceptable as according to our fund balance policy to prove that number from fund balance from the, in addition to the one point three seven five that's already budgeted.
So.
Okay.
Four point two million dollar capital improvement. You want to increase it a hundred thousand. Uh, which will come out of the general.
Yes.
Which we are really helping. Yes. Jack? Yes, you think?
Absolutely. I, I'm on board, I mean, my, my basic breakdown is a lot of these projects have been on the books for a couple years, we keep delaying them, that's why the general fund continues to. That we're gaining that in that general fund will help find time to produce the projects, it's rise of costs, that hundred thousand general. That's all I understand, and do you have any comments, questions?
Um, traditionally, what we have done in the past is looked at the individual projects and see if we could slice off a little something. For example, the Grubbs Walk sidewalk, um, the last I saw it, and things have changed a lot, but the last I saw it, there was a crosswalk that was included in the cost. And where they wanted the crossbo, walk was across McCandless Drive, and. I really didn't think we needed a crosswalk there. So to me, if you looked at the project and said, oh, we could cut that crosswalk and then get that cost down a little bit. And if we did that with these projects as opposed to a full thing or not, do, do you see what I'm saying?
I believe the crosswalk, because if, if you're referencing McCandless Drive, I believe the crosswalk has already been removed from that cost. Because Public Works completed the section of crosswalk from McCandless Drive to the entrance to Town Hall. So this estimate that Gateway provided me a couple weeks ago for the sixty thousand is to complete the sidewalk and the ADA ramps. From the entrance to Town Hall to Inglemar Road. So I think, I think that piece has already been sliced from the existing project.
Well, uh, as I said, um, I've not, that's, none of that's been communicated, so I wouldn't know that. So I have no comments.
Kathy, do you have any? Any comments, questions?
I think I'd like to see the breakdown of that.
Of the Grubbs Road or of the CIP?
Both.
Okay, I'm happy to put that into an ordinance tonight and get that to you this week, we have to have it on the website by Thursday for the public notice.
Okay. And, and the Perry Highway sidewalk too, because maybe there's something there also that can be cut. And still, you know, make it a complete walk, I, I, I don't know. But that's how we did this in the past, we looked at the details of the project to see if we could still get the major thing accomplished.
Carolyn, do you have any questions, comments?
Uh, no questions.
So, and I guess is it, is it? We're okay to, you know, add a hundred thousand, or can you, or it seems like some of the, in the court of, hey, can you just give them one last look?
Yes.
And see if there's a, uh, any savings?
Let me, um, speak with Gateway tomorrow and see what we can do on the top project, and see where they're at with this stormwater item.
So.
One thing that's cutting costs, uh, sorry, we assume you should be able to prove it, and then work with them to do so, but we don't spend projects. Yeah, we just move forward.
Can you guys speak up, I can't hear you, it, it is hard for us to hear.
We're, we're working on the computer mic, um, speak back there, Jeff. Yeah, you're, yeah, you're. Yeah, we're sorry, we're trying to get through here.
You're a lot noisier than me.
So, basically, I guess, is everyone on council except, except, no, we're open to the hundred thousand, just please give it a once-over to see if there's any things that we could shake out.
Save as much as you can, save, save, save what we can.
Is that enough direction for you?
Yeah, because I'll, I'll say with the stormwater stuff and PRPs, I mean, these are, you know. Projects that aren't finalized even in design yet, they are general goals of what early footage is on Streambed, so there, there's a lot of variable there. Yeah, I, yes, anywhere we can save money, we can save money, I'm all for saving money.
And that was the conversation, is that even if Gateway comes back with a project this year, is it really something that we can get done by December?
Exactly.
Okay, Kath, are you comfortable with that approach?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Cam, are you comfortable with that approach?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Carolyn? Okay, you got what you need?
I did, thank you.
Thank you for answering all of our comments.
Jack wants to continue. Certainly. Liaison reports, Dr. Roca?
Um, no meeting, um, McCandless Industrial Development Authority, there was no meeting.
The North North.
Meeting minutes from the quarter ago meeting are in everyone's packet with, uh, that Thursday night, I was able to attend a hundred chunk of me on, online.
Speak, speak up, Mike, please.
Yeah, uh, yeah, the meeting minutes are in your packet, okay.
Thank, I'm, I'm sorry, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I did have a question, I noticed all those nice grants that were coming through the cog, and I was wondering if McCandless has applied for any of that Active Allegheny Grant Program? Or the Growing Green, uh, Grant, or the, um, Light Removal Program, since we have had a couple of properties that have, we've, um, are trying to deal with.
None that I, none that I know of.
We have, I forwarded that information onto Gateway as well, um, the demos would have been in process, but we have not done those as part of the blight. But we will keep those, as well as other projects in mind. We look at that, Jeff did apply for the Arley Green Light Go.
The Arley.
Arley, we did apply for the Arley Grant for the signals for twenty twenty-three.
Green Light goes September.
But the blight grant would apply to the following year, and I know we still have other homes that we have to take a look at.
So the next step is, what, Tricia to have?
We'll assign it to a staff member and they'll proceed it.
Very good, you could just, in your town manager, let us know who got what, like you assigned this to a person and with a date, something, on a report back. Is that completing your report?
Yes, sir.
Any public comment, those here, uh, or those online, about anything on administration and finance? Seeing none here?
No.
None online? Very good. Carolyn, you comfortable doing your, we're leading this from the phone for the recreation committee?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Uh, we can't, or at least I can't.
Take it over time.
Okay.
Yes, the advisor committee, um, does any, anyone have any questions, comments, uh, for the activities committee?
Nope, seeing none.
No questions.
Um, next up, we have the Finance Development Social Committee for the Heritage Center, Trish Fluden. Um, any questions, comments about that?
Trish isn't here, but it looks like our.
The minutes should be in the packet.
The minutes are in the packet.
Yeah, I, does anyone know, this is just one of my questions I have, it may be Trish, great help there. So at the bottom of the first page, it mentions that they're spending sixty-five hundred for a twenty by twenty foot tent, is that purchasing or is that for a rental?
We have someone here in the audience that might be able to speak to that.
Abby, are you renting that tent or purchasing that tent? I can't hear her, but.
We're having Abby come up to the podium to talk.
Evening. Carolyn, to answer your question, that was a budget amendment proposal that we sent to Trisha to buy a tent. So we can assemble a tent for every event that we're hoping to. Put on for the rest of the year for fundraising purposes, um, but that, um, probably.
It's, it's hard, because we're.
Okay. They, they wanted to post that as a budget amendment, but we did not add any money as part of that for the museum because it's a new item. So the, um, and for the golf outing, did you guys rent it? For the past golf outing? Yes, so they rented it for the past golf outing, and then we have a couple tents within the town that we can loan, and they need to destroy resources. Got you, okay. That's the only question I had, is there enough of you other questions? Any public comment questions?
What comments on recreation, anything, anyone here in the building, anyone online, no? Thank you.
Okay, hearing none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, enter on town manager's report.
So the report was in your packet, there are updates on a number of items and topics. I am happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Any, you want, no? Thank you. County attorney's report?
My report was also uploaded to the SharePoint, happy to answer any questions in executive session for one on. At the end of my report.
Thank you. Uh, under old business, I think we touched on this earlier, uh, our redistricting update, I know, uh, RJ from, uh. Had talked to, once you give the, she said the county.
Yeah, RJ was reaching out to the county to determine if there are any other steps.
Harry?
Information the county would need, um, from the town.
Someone's ringing.
With, with respect to, um, you know, shifting, you know, this few areas in the different voting districts. But un- until we hear from them, I don't, I, I haven't heard back from RJ whether or not that has occurred. Uh, and then we are shooting to have a public hearing on this in.
We, we had shots for August, depending on how fast that comes back.
And, and we are trying to shoot for the second being September for adoption. Which is still a couple months ahead of additional adoption schedule for the past couple of redistricting processes, so. That's, I think that's.
Did it get shared with council, I know, Jack, I think you asked that a couple meetings ago, did you get that dumped into a SharePoint?
It is in a, it's in a separate SharePoint for the non-checkout.
Okay. New business, uh, Trish, you want to give us the?
Yes, so this is a resolution amending a previous resolution, um, and what we did is we restructured. The loan outstanding for peavils, uh, from the Fire Acrobatics Reserve Funds. The peavils had a ladder truck, and they found a buyer in Idaho. They would pay them over nine hundred thousand dollars for the truck, they need a pumper truck or engine truck for ninety-eight percent of their haul. And so to better utilize their force, they looked to trade in or trade out, um, their ladder truck for the pumper truck. Uh, they're not asking for a new loan, they're strictly asking to change the lien on the loan from the ladder truck to the pumper truck. They will continue the loan on the originally agreed upon set of terms, uh, which I believe is about four and a half years left on it, at about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They'll continue to make those quarterly loan disbursements at ten thousand dollars a quarter. And they'll actually receive the truck in April of twenty twenty-three, um, so they'll continue to pay even without the additional engine. There's no pact in the surrender, it's simply a transfer of the security. Under the revolution. Any questions?
Is there a transference cost?
No. But they have worked out the agreement, um, with the ladder truck, there is a, um, commission for the seller, the broker. The, uh, the need for the additional hundred and eighty, um, is more or less to out. The uh the need for the additional hundred and eighty um is more or less to outfit the new engine um and and things to that nature. So um like I said, it'll, on paper, it'll look the same. Um I won't change anything when it comes to their repayment schedule. Um and they are here in the audience this evening if anyone has any additional questions on. It's a similar truck to what we purchased for Highland in February or cooperation with Highland in February. Um and they are getting their truck within a month, I believe, of when Highland is expecting theirs. And it's about a four to five month difference. They went with something that was closer to spec on the lot.
I'd just like to add, it does not change their position, the other fire departments in purchasing and both the other fire departments agree to this as well.
Anyone, Kathy, have any other questions? Two members of the fire department here, you need to ask them anything? Anyone?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt currently identified resolution number twelve, two thousand twenty two. Amending listed title of secured lien for loan funds to people's district volunteer fire company from the fire apparatus reserve fund originally approved in resolution number sixteen of two thousand sixteen to a Pierce enforcer custom pumper truck for the continuation of the originally agreed upon set of terms.
Five seconds, okay. Any other comments before we vote? Okay, everybody in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next one.
So the next item on the agenda is the purchase order four eighty one and for the RC motor mower from RC and I'm sorry, from M Tech Company. Jeff is in the audience. If you have specific questions about the mower, this item has been in the budget for the last two years, I believe. This year, it was in the budget for fifty four thousand as a, as addressed during the budget update. It's coming in at about sixty one. Um this item will help us to cut the grass in all of the stormwater ponds. It's not just grass, but other items and something as well. It's a heavy duty mower. Um it can pretty much stand on ends and not flip. There will be specific uh crew members who are trained in its operation, but it will help. What did you say, Jack? Sixty stormwater ponds? Yeah, roughly that we'll have to look at over the the course of the year or years that this will facilitate our. Maintenance and up, there you go.
One of the advantages of a mower like this is you can get in access through people's yards without taking our giant tractor through somebody's yard. So it allows a easier access, less damage. You know, I'm part of this industry, it's the way.
So is this robotic?
It's remote control.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sounds like we've got them all answered. Anyone want to oppose a motion?
Sure. Motion to approve purchase order number four eighty one in the amount of sixty thousand one hundred and thirty two dollars for a mower. M Tech.
Second. Second. Any uh final comments before we go? Hearing none? Everyone in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, okay. Next item of business, a notice intent to vote on tentatively identified ordinance fifteen twenty six. Amending part five of the town code ordinances, traffic code. Article five point five, traffic regulations to pivot market along the northern side of Rollhouse Road in the intersection with Route nineteen for a distance of two hundred and thirty feet on August eighth. Next up, we got a bid for some work in a wall park that Gateway Engineers has suggested that we reject. So I guess, is there any questions on that from anyone on council?
I just want to make the comment that there's still two hundred and fifty thousand dollars associated to this account that we'll need to add to next season. So I certainly hope that everybody would support moving that hundred and eighty five or whatever is necessary to complete the project next year. But I'm hoping if our new town manager, we can go out and get additional funding to do some other things to make there's sixty acre park there and.
I, we can't hear you, Jack.
Thanks, everybody, for bearing with us. This is a work of technology.
Sorry, Kathy, I just want to make the point that there's still two hundred and fifty dollars allocated to Wal Park that came in through a grant. And that I would certainly hope that everybody would entertain increasing the amount we'll spend on Wal Park next year to be able to accomplish what's necessary.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to reject the Wal Park bid.
Second.
Uh any final comments, questions, anybody from council? Very nice. Uh everybody in favor of rejecting the Wal Park bid, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was just a housekeeping item, uh Matthew, this is my personnel board. You certainly can.
Okay, um I make a motion to accept the resignation of Matthew Lucas from the personnel board.
Second. Uh everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. And Kathy, uh since you were the chair of the search committee, uh would you like to make the next motion?
Yes, I moved to appoint Brian Umani as town manager and town secretary of the town of McCandless effective on or about August twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, per the acceptance offer letter of July fifteenth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Second, I'm just wanting, everyone in favor of the appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have anything to say to the, up to the group?
No one can hear you, but.
Say it to us.
Say it. So, well, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm very excited to come work for McCandless and this council and people of McCandless. And, uh, you know, we we talked a lot of times through our discussion about what a premier place that McCandless is to to live. And one of those things that makes it great is the people. Obviously, through the years, this town has worked together with each other to to make it a great place to live. And I'm honored to be a part of it. I want to continue to offer the great services that the employees here and councils have offered through the years. And uh it was uh the council president said before every meeting, I I look forward to working together to continue to make McCandless nice. So I'm very excited, opportunity, looking forward to meeting all the people in McCandless, getting to know everyone a little bit better. Thank you again.
Welcome to the.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will host an open house for you today so you can get to know people and we can have the community come in and say hi to you and stuff and then invite your extended family and stuff.
Yes, sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, uh last under new business, um you know, over the past three or four meetings, we've heard comments on those in our community that, yeah, we need to tweak the the town noise work. I just wanted to see, hear everyone's opinion on that and see if it, uh if it's a no, we're good. If it's a, you know what, let's have one of our experts, whether that would be our new code enforcement officer or our, or Ryan, our police chief, give us some feedback on maybe what they would want to see uh or, you know, we do something different. So uh does anybody have any initial thoughts?
I'd love to see an ad hoc committee, maybe of our police chief or code enforcement and someone from council and let them explore that and look and research the Hampton, you know, and kind of come back with the idea.
Yeah, Hampton has a lot of like very specific measurements, like you can't have this many decibels this, you know, from this point to that point, here's how it's measured and stuff. So whether that helps our code enforcement people or 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 not, I don't know. I know we've also had not just, you know, dirt bikes and things, but I know we've had people have like impromptu concerts in their yard that have, that have like made that 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 noise, made noise and people, so. Those uh those participating on the phone or online, I know it's a little hard to hear. Any thoughts on that? Would you be supportive of Jason's idea? Kathy, want to start?
I think that it's important that we take a look at it because if our law enforcement cannot enforce certain things, then we need to take a look at it and change it. Uh as it's written right now, there's not, it sounds like there's not a whole lot they can do. So I'm for taking a look at it and I would agree, we need to develop an ad hoc committee.
Kim, any comments?
I agree.
Okay, Carolyn, you're supportive of a, any comments? Are you supportive of the idea of a small? Okay, so I think it would be the police chief, the code enforcement officer, maybe one member of council, but that, that, that seems, that's agreeable. Okay. All right, perfect. Yeah, anyone want to volunteer on?
I'll take it.
Okay, very good. Wonderful. Thanks, Carolyn. Okay, uh last up, is there any public comments, any on agenda items from those here gathered with us? You'd say your name and.
Alan Bright, nine, six, three, five, Old Timber Road, Allison Park, PA. Um I'm here to talk about the new zoning map and the process and if it could be both inclusive and transparent. Um it's my understanding that the committee that's looking at this is not represent, does not have representation from each ward and that it would be important people is represented on that committee. Um as far as transparency goes, um the acronyms are really tough. Like Salgo, like I keep thinking of the salad, like what kind of salad do you want on a burger? If that can be broken down so that we know what Salgo means. I didn't take a thorough look at the website. It is the process being posted on the website for transparency. Um is, there's a proposed new map. It would be nice to see the proposed new map along with the old map so you can see the differences between the old and the new. The schedule for this zoning process would be also nice to have posted on the website. That's it for the moment, but I'm sure I'll be back.
All good comments, I can, I can, what I'd like to do, chat, uh RJ Susko, who's leading that, contact you. Leave us every contact info. I think all of this is being done so she can just share with you, you know, where it is easy to find such and if it's not, maybe that's just a learning a learning experience for her, say, you know, our residents aren't, aren't seeing this piece of communication. It probably went went out there and then she can, she can change change for. So we'll have her follow up with you in the next day.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in to call. Any uh or public comment on non-agenda items? Anyone here joined with us? No? Assume no one online?
No.
No? Okay. Motion to adjourn. De moved. Second, everyone in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for putting up.